To order, it is Monday, February 9th, 2015. I would like to ask everyone to please silence your cellphones. And I would also like to thank Deputy Wine with the Spotsylvania Sheriff's Office for being here with us today. Mr. Blaine, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I will so move.
A motion by Mrs. Blaylock and a second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Seven zero. There is no two point zero one, there is no public hearing. On to three point zero one, Smith Station Elementary School. Mrs. Flannard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Smith Station Elementary School has fifth graders and they are going to perform a few winter-slash-snow selections for us this evening. And they will accompany their singing on the orf instruments that we're going to learn a little bit more about. And their director, thank you for coming this evening, is Maria Norford.
Hello, we are some of the fifth graders from Smith Station Elementary School. We will be playing some songs and s- sorry. We will be singing some songs and playing instrument and playing the orf instruments to a few songs under the direction of our music teacher, Maria Norford. These instruments include the glockenspiel, the xylophone, the metalophone, and the bass bars. We especially like playing the in- sorry. We have a lot of fun learning our songs through movement, rhythm, and melody. We especially like playing the instruments in music class. We hope you enjoy our songs. If we sing them really well, maybe we get snow.[177.01][177.01](laughter)
(singing) On a cold and frosty night, dark as the sky were stepping out of sight. Still is the air a silent wind blows, walking along on a winter cold night. On a cold and frosty night, dark as the sky were stepping out of sight.
Our next song is "Man It's Cool" by Michael R. Nichols.
Our last song tonight is "Dancing Snowflakes," arranged by Jeff Crisk and Randy DeLele. We hope you all enjoyed our performance this evening.
Thank you so much, that was awesome. All those instruments, they just sounded so good. I hope you guys had fun doing it, too. I'm gonna give you all a couple of minutes. Thank you so much. No, take your time, you're good. Once again, Smith Station fifth graders, thank you so much for being here and performing for us. Great night. Okay, on to recognitions and awards. Item four point zero one, the Division Spelling Bee winner, Ms. Flannard.
Thank you. The 2015 Division Spelling Bee was held on January 10th. Students representing all seventeen elementary schools, as well as all seven middle schools, participated in this year's Spelling Bee. The event was coordinated by Ms. Stephanie Felinger. And many thanks go to the staff who assisted with the competition, and without them it would not have been possible. I would like to have a special thank you to Ms. Amanda Blaylock, who was the master of ceremonies that evening, or mistress of ceremonies that evening, as well as Catherine Latelier, who was the pronouncer. The first place winner of the competition will advance to the 10th Annual Freelance Star Regional Spelling Bee, which will be held on Saturday, March 21st, at 1:00 PM at the James Monroe High School in Fredericksburg. The regional winner will be eligible to participate in the 88th Annual Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC, that is beginning on May 24th. In the event the first place winner is not able to attend, the runner-up will represent Spotsylvania County Public Schools. It is with great pleasure that we recognize this year's first place and runner-up winners for the 2015 Division Spelling Bee. And when I please call your name if you could come forward. Our runner-up this year is Journey Cole from Spotsylvania Middle School.[790.02][790.02](applause) And I believe we do have family standing, if there is anyone else from her family here representing her, if they could please stand as well.
From her bulldog.
And from her bulldog. Thank you, Principal Mr. Blaine. Congratulations. And our first place winner from Nye River Middle School this year is Mia McGill.[834.37][834.37](applause) And if we have her family represented in the audience, if they could please stand Congratulations to Mia and Journey on a job well done.[868.23][868.23](applause)
Ms. Flannard, continue with the Fine Arts Award, please.
Thank you, sir. This month, the Spotsylvania County Public Schools Administration Office is showcasing a hundred and sixteen pieces of outstanding artwork from our students. Five schools are in this exhibit. The schools are Battlefield Elementary School, art teacher Frankie Wheeler. If any of the individuals are here or students, if they could stand when we call their school. We also have Cedar Forest Elementary School, art teacher Cynthia Daniels; Thornburg Middle School, art teacher Letitia McMillan; Freedom Middle School, art teacher Andrew Beckers; and Chancellor High School, art teacher Tony Scott.[921.00][921.00](applause) These students received their certificate of appreciation prior to the board meeting this evening, and we celebrate their creative success and accomplishments of each of these student artwork.
If we could continue with the Superintendent's Award, please.
Thank you. February Superintendent's Award for Outstanding Visual Art goes to Elena Fandrich. Elena is a 12th grader who attends Chancellor High School. Her art teacher is Tony Scott. And we would like to thank Elena Fandrich and her art teacher, as they come forward to be recognized for her outstanding accomplishment. And we have her piece up here for all to see. And as well, if there are family here to support Elena, if you could please stand
Now I'll read for the Meritorious Budget Award. For the sixth year in a row, the Association of School Business Officials International is pleased to announce that Spotsylvania County Public Schools has received the ASBO's Meritorious Budget Award for its 2014-2015 annual budget. The Meritorious Budget Awards program promotes and recognizes excellence in school budget presentation and enhances school business officials' skills in developing, analyzing, and presenting a school system budget. After reviewed by professional auditors, the award is conferred only on school districts that have met or exceeded the program's stringent criteria. The ASBO Award represents a significant achievement by Spotsylvania County Public Schools. It reflects the commitment by the finance staff, school, and department bookkeepers, as well as school and department administrators, to achieve the highest standards of school budgeting. On behalf of the Board, we congratulate the following individuals for their dedication in the preparation of the award-winning SCPS Fiscal Year 2015 Budget Book. Please come forward to be recognized as we announce your name. Bobby Stormback. Bot, excuse me. Once again, let's thank our fabulous finance staff for the Meritorious Budget Award.[1160.64][1160.64](applause)
Congratulations to all of our award winners. On to item five point zero one, Public Comments. Dr. Martin?
Good evening. The Public Comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state their name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Peter Fotenhauer.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairwoman Shelley, Dr. Baker, other members of the administrative team and school board. My name is Peter Fotenhauer. I'm a civics teacher at Nye River Middle School. I live and vote in the Battlefield District, and I speak tonight as president of the Spotsylvania Education Association. Tonight you will vote on a calendar and a budget, and I have comments dealing with both subjects and a recent court case. First, about calendar, which is truly an annual undertaking guaranteed not to please almost anyone. SCA members shared concerns with me in the past week about process, more so than the options presented. While there are benefits early in the school year to starting after Labor Day, there is a price to pay later when students are expected to be taking high-stakes tests late into June, with school not ending until the 17th. What we as staff do with the 180 days of school matters more than when we work that magic. But June is a very tough month for students to stay focused, and the consequences of the tests that they will take truly have impacts that can influence and affect every school in our division. Members raised questions about why we were using two-year-old data for you to make such a decision. Why were the versions of the calendar the committee developed not presented to staff and parents in a survey, as was previous practice? I simply asked that whichever calendar options you adopt this year, that keep in mind we will face a similar dilemma next year when Labor Day will be on September 8th. Let's be sure we do a better job next year, including all stakeholders, in the process of gathering information, so that you can make a decision based on the best information we have, that will put kids first. On the FOIA front, many people may be aware that last week, the Department of Education lost a case in Loudoun County, actually in Circuit Court in Richmond, that mandated that it must release data on student growth percentiles under the Freedom of Information Act request. Upon hearing this, Virginia Education Association began consulting with the Department of Education because we were gravely concerned about the release of data in a way that could damage the reputations of thousands of good teachers across the state who might have students who did not test well or show as much growth as students in other classes. I'm pleased to say that on Friday, VEA attorney Deana Rosenkrantz filed a motion with the court to allow VEA to enter with standing to represent the interests of teachers across the state whose professional careers could be impacted by this release. It's VEA's position that such data is privileged information because it is used in evaluation decisions, and therefore should be exempt under the law, and we believe that the judge in question failed to notice this part of state code. Finally, tonight on budget. We encourage you to stay the course and adopt the budget that was presented to you with the modifications that have been made because of changes in funding. As I said last month, there is something in this budget for all the stakeholders, and although we wish there was more in the way of improvements, there are improvements, which is a positive sign after five years of very rough sledding in a tough economy. A $3.1 million gap in the budget in a year when the county had an $8 million surplus, largely from increased revenue, means you're asking the county for 37.5% of said surplus. That should be an easy gap to close, even with school expenditures now only receiving 50% of county general funds. I am also happy to report the State Senate and House Money Committees released budget details yesterday that include some state money for teacher and other SOQ position pay increases, though not enough money is proposed by the state to cover the full cost of the 3% cola in the budget. I'm sure Ms. Gaines will break it down to the penny for you in a few minutes. The last time the state provided funds for teacher salary increases that required a local match, however, this county was one of ten in the state that said no. So while this is a positive development, one that I am happy to say grew from VEA's relentless lobbying in Richmond about how far Virginia teacher salaries lag the national average, we have work to do with the Board of Supervisors on this development. SCA stands ready and willing to be a partner in that work. We are interested in a budget that puts kids first with new ELL teachers, special ed positions, additional bus capacity, and more classroom aids. I look forward to being able to speak to you at your next meeting about our plans for Read Across America and our celebration February 28th. Thank you.
Bishop Shawn Davis?
Even you'd think I was gonna sing, huh? Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. I know I will eventually be in front of you guys at some point, coming here as time as I have, but thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you this evening. As some of you know, I've been coming to the school board meetings off and on from time to time, and been involved from different things, from different community things within the Spotsylvania community. And it's been an honor to be able to do that, and to be able to work with the youth, as some of you have seen me do. That's something that's very dear to my heart. I have two sons, as some of you may know, they've gone through K through 12 here in Spotsylvania County. It was pretty neat today to see Smith Station here, because both my boys went to Smith Station, so it's like my alma mater, so it was pretty good to see them perform. But through their experience here, going through K through 12, they've been prepared for the constant changes that's been going out into the world. Today, they are both attending accredited universities, and I believe it's because of the excellence that is expected from your staff, Dr. Baker, and from this school board, and from the students, and from the teachers. I know several teachers that's within the district as well, and it's pretty neat to see the priorities that they actually do put on the students, so I'm very honored to be a part of that as well. I've decided, or I have a desire to serve, to make a quality education for all our children, and in doing so, to make it a priority to help our schools function in an excellent way. The other point I'd like to make is, one of the meetings that I came, one of your members had mentioned how they went to Richmond to fight for the different political and put pressure on the state for different funding issues that have gone on there in the state, which I thought was a great idea. Keep up the good work. This is something that I've done from time to time on other issues, but to go there and fight for funding, I think is a wonderful thing to be able to do. But I know I would like to see the state, you know, for once, give the appropriate level of funding to the localities, rather than force localities to make up a budget gap, because state is not prioritizing, you know, the educational needs. The biggest issue we face at all levels of government, in my honest opinion, is not prioritizing our current funds in an appropriate manner. I'm thankful to be at the budget meeting that you had a couple of weeks ago, and to see how that was broken out, and to see how that's done. It was an honor to be a part of that, and to see that, Dr. Baker, how you was very forth and clear planning. It was a great brief. I wish I could see that brief, I would like to see that brief. That was very well done. But with that said, and I don't want to stay and prolong, because I got, what, two more minutes? I'm trying to use my whole five minutes, no, just joking.[1749.11][1749.11](laughter) But with that said, as some of you may know here in the room, it is election year, and I've been involved in politics off and on throughout the years, and know that I'm in the Salem district. I would like to run for the school board district in Salem. So with that said, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come before you. I know it's gonna be a challenging run. I want to thank my lovely wife for coming out and being here, she's so calm being back there, but I hope I see you all in the future, and many more things that we'll be able to do together. Thank all of you.
Madam Chair, that's all of the speakers that signed up.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone?
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening? Mr. Petway.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mo Petway. I live in the Battlefield District. I'm just here to just be thankful to be here and also to show thanks to and appreciation for Dr. Baker and Mrs. Baylock attending the event that was hosted, and Governor was there. I just wanted to give them a hand as they represent the county in that event yesterday. Y'all don't mind joining? Give them a hand, please, if you don't mind. Thank you so much. I'm also here to thank the school board and their consistent and untiring effort to support the great middle school debate. And I just want to say to the parents out there, if you have a child that's in middle school, the middle school debate is scheduled for May 2nd, be at Poso School. And we talk of issues that's relevant, that's current issues that we'll be discussing this year, and we're asking that the parents allow their kids participate in that event. There is some, you can ask your school about it, there's a monetary reward as well as trophies and certificate for them participating in that. But I just wanted to thank the school board for their constant effort in supporting that event, and again, I thank you so much. And I'll give you a round of applause. And lastly, I want to remind, I know you are gonna do that anyway, is that the Head Start program, it's very important that that does not get cut. I say again, because, you know, you guys know that teachers can tell you when a kid does not get Head Start, believe me, they are so far behind, it's very difficult to catch up. So in all your cutting and everything, because I understand that there are going to be some funds that's gonna be cut, but as you prioritize, please prioritize the Head Start program. It's essential, it's critical, and it affects our kids, you know, and they need it. And thank you so much, and great job. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers from the audience?
Good evening, Dr. Baker, Chairwoman Shelley, and rest of the board. I'm Michael Wood in the Berkeley District, and we all know it's budget season. And that's, you know, most people don't like budget season, and I actually enjoy it because that's what drove me to get more involved. And so I know you guys have tough decisions coming up here this evening, and I just wanted to speak to you all and to the community. And when I noticed that the county had a $9 million, $8 million surplus, depending on how the numbers are calculated, we had a surplus, that's the point. And so the issue shouldn't be, you know, cutting from school budget. When we have a surplus, education is one of the things we should be prioritizing at the local level, along with police and fire and rescue. So the question I think that needs to be asked by you, the board, as well as the rest of the community in Spotsylvania, is where did these extra funds go? Now, the county's proposed budget is gonna be released tomorrow, and I would just encourage everyone in the community to keep a sharp eye on where those extra funds are going to see what is being prioritized here in Spotsylvania County. Thank you.
Any more speakers from the audience? Okay, with that, I will close 5.01 and move on to 5.02, Board Member Comments. Ms. Grant, I'll start with you tonight.
There's a first time for everything. I just want to summarize my week since the work session, and I've gotten over 85 emails, thankfully, about the calendar, and 96% of those who took time to contact me were for a pre-Labor Day start, citing reasons for more instruction time before the AP tests, more instruction time before bad weather, and citing that the younger kids tend to lose interest after Memorial Day, so there'll be less instruction days after Memorial Day. I also agree with an earlier speaker that we definitely should be doing another survey because the data we have is older, and I would encourage that, and that I appreciate the work of the Calendar Committee this year, and they, it sounds like they're hard at work again. So, thank you.
Mr. Laura.
I thought you were gonna, okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. Tomorrow morning is one of those days that I look forward to. For those of you that don't know it, every year, the school division sets aside something called Superstarts, and we get together for breakfast, and we celebrate the contribution of one individual from each school. And it is the most diverse and democratic process ever because we get assistant principals and secretaries and maintenance worker and teachers and nurses, people from all walks of life that contribute to this division, and we get together and we praise them. There's even a small token of appreciation that goes with it. But for me, it just makes my heart glow with joy. So tomorrow morning, I know it's scheduled for 8:00 in the morning, I'll probably be there around 7:30 to welcome everyone. It's one of the things that I truly look forward to. And then Saturday is Valentine Day, and I will not be able to call all the adorable principals of this school division, so I would want to, I just want to say to all of you who call yourself school principal, who are serving this world as principal, Happy Valentine's Day. You are adorable, and yes, I adore you, and I adore each and every one of you that call yourself an educator. Thank you for your contribution to our community and to our society. Having said that, let me finish my comment with a sad statement. There's something terribly wrong going on in our community and in our society. In recent, I don't know when, teachers became the enemy. I don't know when we started as a society fighting against teachers, but I see it all the time in Ohio, in Wisconsin, in California, in Florida, and even in New Jersey, you know, where teachers are taken to task, and it's not fair. Even No Child Left Behind was attacking educators, and this rise to the top, part of it is about firing teachers. And in our own county, my beloved Spotsylvania, where I have spent pretty much my entire life, what are we doing to praise and honor our teachers? I grew up in a world where teachers were honor and love and praise, and in my culture, all of you that speak Spanish or took Spanish back in elementary school, you know that the Spanish word for teacher is maestro. And maestro, of course, is a conductor of an orchestra. It is a term of endearment. It is a term of honor. And there was time that we in America believed that our teachers were maestro, but that's no longer the case. And here's what is happening in our community that troubles me. In the last 11 years, we've seen the contribution of our county to education going down from 65, 61, 59, and this year, and tomorrow, we, Mr. Wood briefly touched on this, tomorrow, my understanding is that we're gonna hear the county administrator say that the contribution of the county is gonna go below 50%. What are we doing? We saw these little kids here from a Smith Station. Do we have an obligation, a moral and legal obligation to take care of those little children? I have seven grandchildren. I worry about the world we live in. There's nothing I can do about what's going on in Ohio or New Jersey, but this is my home. This is where I live, and I worry. It is terribly wrong. And for years, and I feel guilty about this in a way, this is a self-confession, we have gone, we've gone along to get along, but how far are we gonna put up with this? How far do we tolerate the mistreatment of our teachers? Teachers are professionals, they're educators, and they're charged with taking care of our most precious commodity, our children. In our county, we talk about we prepare our students for their future. Well, you know what? At the end of the day, we can't do it just on praises. At the end of the day, we all have to make some sacrifices. We're not doing it in this county, and I hope in the next few months, we start this dialogue where I'm going to go in supporting our educators. These are men and women who are dedicating their life to making this a better world, and yet, we don't, we talk the talk, but we don't walk the talk, and it troubles me. It is terribly wrong. And our superintendent put together a budget that has a 2.7 million, what's the word I'm looking for? Gap. 2.1, 3, that's peanuts. And yet, in the next few months, we're gonna be worrying about that. Come on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Mr. Blaine.
Over the weekend, I was out of town, so I bring you welcome from 10 below zero in Chicago. Coming back today, or last night, actually, was a real treat, I can tell you. I haven't been so cold since I moved to Virginia several years ago. This afternoon, just a little while ago, we saw a phenomenal demonstration of young people. Mr. Laura used the word maestro a minute ago in the music context, and maestros come from starting at this kind of place that we just saw, little kids playing music and doing other things. And if we don't, and we need to invest at this level, because from this comes professionalism and education and success in our society. So I find myself very much in agreement with the things that Mr. Laura literally just has spoken about. Primary grades is where you learn to read. In the rest of your life, you'll read to learn. And I think that's where we need to make major emphasis, as I mentioned at our last meeting. This has been a propitious evening because I was looking what I've been doing for a while, and this is, happens to be the fourth year of a four-year term that we're just And it's been an exciting four years, and I've had a couple of phone calls from people asking me what I'm planning to do, and so this is a propitious, in a way, for the earlier speaker. My fundamental purpose has always been in life to feel that every single one of us needs to make a contribution to our community in some way, and I've consistently tried to do that, I might say. I worked in and lived in a community of about 56, a village, actually, of 56,000 people, and I served on a library board there, elected for 15 years, and accumulated some experience that I found helpful, kept me related to education all the time. While there in that same community, I served for 14 years on a high school board of 12,000 students. Very similar in size if we put our, that was our K-12 district together. I've now added another three years to that, and I plan to continue after the election next year, so I just formally had planned to announce this evening, so it's a pleasure to find my opposition, have a chance to get acquainted a little bit later. With that, we'll go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With all the words that Mr. Laura expressed, sort of took the thunder out of what I would ever be able to say so eloquently, I'm just gonna say ditto, and thank you for very well said, because I think that's a conversation that we definitely need to have when we have an opportunity to talk with the members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Mr. Laura. Pass the word, Madam Chair.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to repeat what was eloquently said by Mr. Laura and Mr. Blaine of the importance of investing in our children. I thought it was very well said, and so there's no need to repeat it. I also would like to just make a point of holding some of my comments about the budget and the calendar until we get to those particular parts of our action items, so I'll elaborate more on those items later. I would like to say that I've known Mr. Sean Davis for quite a while, and I've known him for well over 10 years. His son and my son grew up playing football together. We coached together. We've, I've had an opportunity to coach his sons at high school, and I can tell you that he's a very quality man. He's an honorable man, and I'm delighted that he's taken his hat and thrown it into political arena. So good luck to both of you gentlemen on a spirited campaign, and I know that both of you will put the issues out front that benefit our students first. And so with Godspeed to both of you, because I know running a campaign is very difficult, but I would just say that I know for a fact that you are an honorable man, sir, and so are you, Mr. Blaine.
Mrs. Baylock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first thank the speakers. We had great speakers tonight. Mr. Wood, I agree with you completely. I believe that with the $8 million surplus, that we should be able to fund education in this county with no problem. I'm going to refrain from all comments on the budget and the calendar until the action items come forth in a little bit when Mrs. Shelley moves on in the agenda. I wanted to talk about February, this month being Black History Month. If you haven't been in your child's school, go in, there's great displays. I know when I walked into Lee Hill Elementary, where my twins are, they had a wonderful display as you walked in. The children are all studying, wonderful civil rights leaders from past, present, and learning all about what they should this month, and so I want to encourage you to find out, what is your child learning? What is your school doing? Because I can assure you, every single school in the county is recognizing this month, so I wanted to share that. We also, as Mr. Petway had mentioned, the reason I want to mention attending an event yesterday is because I wanted to share that when you're a school board member, you have a lot of proud moments, and one of them is graduation, when they're walking across the stage, and I had one yesterday, and it happened to be Cortland High School's choir. They were invited to perform at an event at Second New Hope Church that I was attending, and I have to say, they just made chills go up my spine, so I wanted to congratulate them on a job well done, and it just really reminded me and thought, it sort of made me think that I wanted to share with the public tonight, when we're talking about budget and we're talking about funding and schools, we need to remember it's the whole child, and fine arts, sports, all of it makes the whole child. We need to give them all the opportunities. Perfect example was the Smith Station children sharing their music with us. So when we think about the nuts and bolts of the budget that we're gonna talk about later, it's pretty easy to have passion for what I do when you see things like Cortland's choir yesterday, or the children today, or attend a sporting event, or a drama production. Mass uponyx is just moving on to regions where there are theater. It's just, we have so much out there we should be proud of, so just take an opportunity to attend some things that your children are doing, or your local high school, a performance that they're putting on. It's just something that I just really wanted to share tonight, to take the time to do that. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll save the rest of my comments for the budget and the calendar at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mrs. Baylock. Once again, I just want to congratulate all of the award recipients, and just a reminder to the board members that tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock, Doug Barnes will be presenting his budget to the Board of Supervisors, so if you're available, maybe you can be there as well. And last week, I held a town hall meeting with Board of Supervisor member Tim McLaughlin, and it was last month, the end of last month, and we had some very good discussions. We had a very good crowd, a lot of people came out, they asked very good questions of us. We were able to answer those questions, which I think is always a plus as well. So those of you who So those of you who came out, thank you very much. And then there will probably be more meeting, town hall meetings with school boards, with school board members, or Board of Supervisors meetings in the coming months or throughout the year. So if you are available to attend one of those meetings, it's just a great informational session for everyone. And once again, as a couple of the members have said, this is African-American History Month. So we will be reading a resolution to recognize that month here this evening as well. So with that, um, okay, yes, Mrs. Blaylock.
I had a few calls, and I failed to mention this. The SAT that was scheduled for January 24th that was canceled, the makeup date is February the 21st at Massiaponics High School. Hopefully, that covers the calls I have. And just FYI, February 16th is the makeup day for the missed date on January 27th. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Blaylock. Okay, Superintendent's Report, 5.03, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I'm gonna, so much was shared, and I echo many comments that were shared tonight. But I am going to also wait until different points in the meeting provide some additional comments and context to the different discussions that are going to occur. So, thank you.
Okay, on to item 6.01, Board Committee Reports. Does anyone have? Mr. Braswell.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity again to address the board. Last week, I had an opportunity to participate in the Father's Night Out for Head Start. It was a great opportunity for us to spend time with fathers and their children, doing a little cooking. But then afterwards, the fathers and I had an opportunity to break out and discuss some issues that are challenging to fathers throughout, you know, throughout that community. I shared with them my trials as a single father, and what I had to go through in order to raise my two sons, and take advantage of community resources to help me do that. And I think it was a good time by all. And I had an opportunity to share and learn from these men as well as they are standing in the breach for their children. So I salute them. I salute what we're doing at the Head Start. I want to commend Ms. Dawn Miller for her hard work and innovation, and coming up with ideas like that, so that we can share with our community the great things that we're doing in Spotsylvania County schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Anyone else? I just want to mention that on February 19th, there will be a Food Task Force meeting for Ms. Blaylock, and I will be attending that. Okay, and now on to 6.02, AP Capstone, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Massiaponics and Riverbend High Schools were accepted to join more than 436 schools worldwide to implement College Board's AP Capstone Diploma Program. AP Capstone is an innovative program that allows students to engage in the rigorous development of skills critical for success in college inquiry, research, collaboration, and writing. The program includes a two-course sequence, AP Seminar, and AP Research. Developed in response to feedback from higher education faculty and college admission officers, AP Capstone complements the in-depth, subject-specific rigor of AP courses and exams. The first of two AP Capstone courses, AP Seminar, will start in the fall of 2015. Tonight, staff is proud to provide information pertaining to this new diploma option.
Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This really is an exciting day for Spotsylvania County as we introduce our new AP Capstone Diploma. We believe that all students should have the opportunity to take the most rigorous coursework available. AP courses are often referred to as the gold standard, and as such, the AP Capstone Diploma is a nice complement to current AP courses being offered. The AP Capstone pilot began during the 2014-2015 school year. At that time, only one Virginia school was selected to participate. Next year, during the 15-16 school year, eight Virginia high schools will be participating in the new Capstone Diploma Program. Two of those high schools are right here in Spotsylvania County, and we're really proud of that. As Mr. Wolf said, we'll be joining over 436 schools worldwide who will be offering the AP Capstone Diploma. Staff from Massiaponics and Riverbend have been collaborating all school year to develop the new Diploma Program. We also have a strong relationship with our College Board, as I've been elected and serve currently on their National Board. So tonight, you will hear from Emily Wessel, who is our first speaker from Riverbend High School, and later, you'll hear from Julianne Shield from Massiaponics. They are both AP coordinators who have been very instrumental in the development of this
Tonight, we'll go through the background of our AP program that's currently in place at our schools and throughout the whole county. We'll also take a look at the AP Capstone Program and the benefits that it offers to our students and family members, and then we'll have some time for questions and answers at the end. We are an AP program throughout the whole county. We have this available in all schools. All these courses are college-level courses that are available to high school students starting in ninth grade. Students are expected to take the AP exam, which takes place in May. It's the first two weeks of May every calendar year. And students, if they score a three, four, or five on those exams, they usually receive some type of college credit at whatever university they attend. They can either get a course, like an introductory-level course taken off, or they could receive elective credits due to their score. These are our current AP courses that are offered at our high schools throughout the county. As you can see, we have arts AP courses, English through the history and social sciences, mathematics, including our computer science programs, sciences, and then our world languages. So our AP Seminar and AP Research would be in addition to these current AP courses. There have been research, research studies that have been done to show that an AP course will help students build the critical learning skills that are needed to continue in their education in college. Confidence also is a key thing with high school students. And so to take an AP course and to succeed, we have found that students, that level of confidence definitely rises throughout their high school career. AP courses really help students with time management and with study skills. Students are given specific ways to help them with actually taking notes in class, to study for specific exams, and then to study for the AP exam at the end of the year. There's nationally researched that has shown that students who score a three or above on an AP exam usually have higher grade point averages in college, and they have a higher graduation rate than their non-AP peers. With AP classes, we also, this also benefits family members, students who take AP courses and receive that college credit, it also saves their families money. Students are more likely to graduate in four years than to actually take a little bit longer. And this definitely represents savings. As you can see, it says the average cost of college for a single year is $21,500, according to this study. And so that would save parents additional money for every credit that is earned. Hi, I'm going to speak to you tonight about the two courses that are offered within the AP Capstone Program. AP Capstone really is unique, and then it's a program that very much is skills-based. Many of the other courses that we offer in the AP, out of all the AP courses, are very content-focused. And this is one that is very skills-based. And if you take a look here, the skills that are being taught and practiced and mastered in these courses are ones that really are necessary for success in college. The two courses, of course, again, are the AP Seminar course, which would be the first course out of the series, and then the AP Research course. Both emphasize skills, and the nice thing is, is that the content really is flexible and allows students to really kind of, kind of delve a little bit more deeply into things that they might be kind of interested in from other AP courses they're taking, or just other coursework. So it really is a compliment to all the other things that we're doing within the schools already. Some of the skills that you can see here, considering multiple perspectives, evaluating information, writing evidence-based arguments, identifying and offering solutions to problems, orally, and communicating and also defending an argument, both orally and in writing as well. And the last section, kind of that collaboration and teamwork, that's something that's really unique here, that very much is a skill that will be needed throughout the student's life. The first course, which is AP Seminar, with your approval, hopefully, we'll be starting it in the fall of 2015, is typically offered to 10th graders and 11th graders, most likely, primarily 11th graders. You can see here that there's an example list of topics. This, again, unique, because we're focused on the skills here. So that means, again, the content is flexible based on kind of what students and teachers kind of want to look at. The students and teachers will work together to identify two to four topics that they're going to study. And as you look at that list, they are hopefully broad, so that students get an opportunity to really kind of investigate multiple perspectives, real-world topics. And it really offers an opportunity for students to have those kind of divergent opinions. And most importantly, finding the evidence to back up those opinions as well. The work that will be done in this class is both independent and also collaborative. You can see that there's also an AP exam connected to this course. The AP exam has several parts. This isn't like a sit-down, take the test, and you're done. The evaluation for this course kind of takes place throughout the year. There is a team project and presentation, which is 25% of the exam score, an individual essay and presentation, 35%, and then they will have a written exam at the end, which is 40%. So that's the first course. The second course that you could take after that seminar course is the AP Research Course. Again, with your approval, this would be starting in the fall of 2016. This course, again, is very unique and offers our students an opportunity to really kind of choose one topic that maybe they looked at in seminar, or maybe that they've studied in other coursework, and design and plan and conduct a year-long, research-based project. This project would be mentored by the teacher that is teaching the course, as well as possibly other teachers that teach in that content area. They're going to learn how to apply research methods and to actually practice kind of real-world research and investigation in the classroom. Ultimately, they will be writing a college-level research paper. They're going to present that paper orally, so kind of what you would almost expect is a master's or a PhD defense. So what a great opportunity for them to be able to hone these skills that hopefully they'll be able to use later. Again, the exam is broken up into several sections. 15% is awarded for that research process, which would be kind of journaling, meeting with their mentor, and so on. There would be an academic thesis paper that's required, again, about a 5,000-word thesis paper. That is the majority of the score, at 70%. And then again, that public defense, kind of that oral presentation of their findings and the work that they've done, and that's 15%. And again, the prerequisite to this course would be that seminar course. So there is that caveat as well. Ultimately, what this will allow our students to go into the college selection process with is kind of two possibilities here. If a student takes the AP Seminar course and the AP Research course, earns a three or better on the AP exam connected to it, and then also earns a three or better on four additional AP courses, they can earn an AP Capstone Diploma. As Mr. Wolf said, this is a unique program, and to have this diploma going into a college admissions process really could kind of set our students above others, not only regionally, but nationally as well. If a student chooses to only take a seminar and the resource course and does not take any other AP courses, they also will be able to leave with kind of an AP, kind of an accommodation. If a student, again, gets a three or better on the AP Research and AP Seminar tests, they can earn a certificate, which would, again, also offer them the opportunity to kind of be able to present that to a college when kind of participating in that admission process. So there are two opportunities for our students to really shine in this program. So our benefits for the AP Capstone Program first start with the skills that the student will learn. It's not just sitting in class and participating, hearing lecture, but actually, like Julie said, going through the writing process, defending a paper, using those critical learning skills, the close reading skills that they've learned in every other class, but actually putting them to use in the AP class. They can also earn college credit, gain the AP Capstone Diploma or the certificate. So again, that will set them apart. It also offers choice. A lot of times, our students are in an AP class, and they get interested in a topic but cannot study further because the teacher is moving on due to time constraints. So this allows them to further explore a topic that they've really grown interested in. With students, this is a pilot program, and so there is one year of data to back this with student performance. And just some highlights that students have said, it's helped to increase their confidence, understanding of different perspectives. Oftentimes, students, they read a text for one perspective, and something that Seminar especially touches on is to look at a text or the world in a different light, to use just these different angles to actually understand what's going on and to try and get a different viewpoint. So students have come away with that. Also, the managing their time, and, you know, just in making their responsibility better on top of other subjects that they're studying, whether it's another AP course, or just another class that they're taking on top of a sport or a job, it's just really helping them to gain that responsibility that they're definitely going to need in college. As far as what other colleges are saying about our AP Capstone Program, here you have some different comments from schools that have been involved in the actual pilot process. The University of Washington, you had MIT, and also Duke University. These are just three of the colleges that participated in actually putting the program together. They highlight that the certificate indicates that students are pushing themselves, whether it's critical thinking skills, but actually doing more to better themselves and to increase themselves, just as a better human being altogether. These are also colleges, if you see the list that's down at the bottom of your screen, these are other colleges that have conveyed support for the program. And as we've seen, as we've gone through this program, more colleges are recognizing the AP Capstone Diploma and certificate daily. This is a pilot program still. And so colleges, as they're learning about the program, just like the high schools are learning about the program, more and more are becoming more and more receptive and actually seeing the diploma and certificate as something that's above other students and just the normal AP classes. Completing the AP Capstone courses, it does tell admissions officers that these students are ready for a challenge. They're ready to think outside the box and to really express themselves when it comes to a certain topic and not follow the norm, which we see some students fall into that throughout high school. These are our current committee members, and at this time, I'd like them all to stand. We have a lot here in the room with us. Mr. Keith Wolf, we have Ms. Linda Binion, Dr. Troy Wright, Dr. Joseph Pisani, Michelle Gordon, Kristy Pitts, Ms. Joan Rahm, Maggie West, Michael Brown, Brian Canavaro, and Sammy Gier. You could please stand. And at this time, if you have any questions, we will field them. And if we have to call up one of our committee members, we would be glad to answer anything that you have.
Mrs. Blaylock.
Thank you. That was a fabulous presentation. I felt like I learned a lot. I had learned a little bit about the program, but certainly not to the depth that you two shared with me. So y'all did a fabulous, fabulous job. Thank you for that. Just a couple of questions. The first one is, AP Seminar a prerequisite for AP Research?
Yes.
Okay. And so that's why you were saying 10th and 11th usually. So does that mean research is usually a senior?
11, 12.
What if a freshman wanted to go into seminar? Is that available? Would that be available in the pilot program, or is that something?
As of right now, it is not available to freshmen, just due to some of the content and maturity. If we have a majority of juniors in the class, we won't be able to talk about some topics. In the future, though, we hope to open it to 10th graders. But it is not, and our discussion has not been brought up for 9th graders yet.
Okay, so if you have a rising senior, for example, this year, they won't be able to participate in the pilot program, since that is a prerequisite? I was wondering kind of would our seniors, rising seniors, get to participate in this?
They could participate in Seminar.
Seminar?
If they wanted to.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's good. Well, I don't have any more questions now. It was a great, great presentation with a lot of information, and I think that what I'm hearing lately, Mr. Wolf, with your high schools, the expansion of the gifted programs and the pilots that are coming up in the near future, including AP Capstone and the IB Program in a couple of years, is certainly a direction I've been wanting to go. I really appreciate this work.
Yes, I certainly appreciate all the work that these ladies have done, as well as members of the committee, but in following along with our strategic plan of, you know, college and career readiness and preparing our students for their future, this is just another pathway for their future. And what has been mentioned and peppered throughout this presentation is opportunity, and that's exactly what this is, is just another opportunity for our students.
And what I really liked about this program is that it really does involve the critical thinking skills. It seems like life skills almost, for just the layman's terms of it, the things that they will use throughout their entire life. It sounds like a program that is really perfect for a lot of our high school students. I was very, very pleased with the presentation. Thank you both very much. Just in closing, I may be emailing a couple of you two with some more questions, if that's okay? Just some little ones that I wouldn't waste the board's time on, if that's okay with you two? All right, thank you.
Mr. Laura.
You just blew my mind. Thank you very much. I've been sitting here in pins and needles. Let me put this in historical context, what this means to me. When I first came to Spotsylvania, we still had segregated schools. This was a rural community, 500 or so seniors at Spotsia High School. Kids from our community didn't go to college. Mary Washington was an old white girl school affiliated with the University of Virginia. Germanic Community College was not around, and here we are talking about AP. I mean, this is cool stuff. It, I also have a little bit of a military background, and I kept thinking that during World War II, George Patton was inspecting a brigade of Marines, and he went to the commander of those Marines, and he said, he said to the Marine, "Where did you get these magnificent people?" You know, "When this meeting is over, I'm going to go to our superintendent and say, 'Where did you get these magnificent people?'" God bless you. Thank you for what you're doing. And last story I want to share with you. In 1954, I was in third, fourth grade, and my teacher walked in there with a subscription for $1, you could subscribe to Time Magazine, and I gave him my dollar, and for a year I've received. Well, the following year, I didn't have to do it, but I did it anyway, and I've been subscribed to Time Magazine since 1954. But there's only one cover that I will never forget, and that was the one that came out a few weeks ago with a rotten apple in it. You're not a rotten apple. You deserve better than that. Time Magazine owes all of you an apology. You're the best people that our society has to offer, and again, thank you for what you're doing. Now, my challenge to you is this, this is African-American Month. Make sure that children from low socioeconomic status get in your program. Poor kids learn, just like rich kids. It's just a matter of motivating them. Make sure the rural kids, out from where I live, get into this program. And make sure the minority kids are encouraged and welcomed into this program, because this is a ticket to success. So would you do that? Thank you. So a year from now, if I ask for a statistical, I'll see more than 1% minority in your program?
We hope so.
And I'll ask you for how many of your kids come from our rural area, and how many of our kids are in reduced or free lunch? You'll have some figures to be proud of? Thank you very much.
Dr. Baker.
I know that other board members have questions. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on that line of thinking, and I wanted to explore the idea of encouraging students with diverse backgrounds to take advantage of this opportunity. Am I wrong in assuming that the skill development is part of what sets this apart, is it's not just a content-specific, but it's that skill development that makes those skills transferable for success beyond high school for any student? And so is there, within, I guess, the articulation of the program within the schools? You know, I'm familiar with some programs such as Avid and programs that encourage students who are either potentially first-time high school graduates, first-time college-bound, I think socioeconomic status has been in minorities, but is there, is that something that you all have discussed in your committee about how you would draw students with the potential, but just have not in the past been encouraged to try to access these types of opportunities?
College Board has a program called AP Potential, and the statistics come from the PSAT, which 10th graders, we encourage all 10th graders to take. Again, I assume you guys use this at Mass upon X at Riverbend as well. We receive this list and go through, and it actually highlights students who are minorities or economically disadvantaged, and it predicts which AP class they would succeed in. And so we use that report to actually speak to those students. We've called them in over the summer, sent letters home, and talked to them one-on-one to encourage them. Students are also given additional support throughout the year. They're either paired with an AP teacher, or they're in a study hall where the teacher can come in and help them as well.
And I just wanted to say, I think that, I wasn't sure that that was there, but that support element during the course of the year, I think, kind of leverages not only the expectations, but that the support is going to be available to those students, I think, is another really important feature. So thank you for that.
Madam Chair, can I have one more? Just before you go, I know from experience that we go out of our way to recruit minority kids to be basketball players and football players. Let's go out of our way to recruit them to become AP students, too. They're capable of learning, I know. And, but we have to meet them halfway and bring them in. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine.
Some of the questions I have, you're kind of in fielding a little bit. How come we start? Suponics? I mean, how are the high schools selected? The program sounds really terrific.
This sort of relates to Mr. Laura's question, that it is a pilot program, and part of what the College Board is looking for is are large schools that have diverse populations? Because we will be required to submit a report to the College Board indicating the diversity that exists within our Capstone Program. So that is part of what they're looking for in the early pilot phase.
Good. And as a pilot program, how many students do you anticipate having one class in each school, or are there several classes?
We're all talking about it back here. The schools have indicated to me that they anticipate two classes at each school.
And about how many in each class?
Could be anywhere between 30 students plus. They've had some AP information nights to try and talk to some students who may be interested in the program, so we're hoping, honestly, a lot more than that. You know, so it's an opportunity. We would love to see all of them at capacity, and I think everyone would agree, so hopefully.
Well, I'd like to suggest, based on the information that I've been learning here this evening and answers to some of these questions, since this is a pilot program, I'd like to suggest, to see if it might work. If you go into business today, you find almost everything is virtual learning. Teachers here, and people are all over the country. These students of ours, when they get into business, are going to be participating in such things. At the same time, there's been some question about, are we going to really reach students from all aspects, all parts of our county, rural, well-to-do, not-so-well-to-do, and so on. CGS uses a Tanberg system, and if one of our high schools is, has an instructional program going on, the other five high schools can participate. They're not on location, but they're all over. And I'd like to suggest that you consider, since this is a pilot program to begin with, that you suggest to the College Board that you'd like to add some virtual learning to it, it's not quite virtual learning, I guess, to give some of the students from some of the other schools who could participate doing, it's like, I guess, our credit recovery program, if I, little I know about that. But I think that that would be very educational for kids, the students that participate in it. It would give us an opportunity to see to it that the school itself and the boundary of that school doesn't delimit where you've got to be to begin with. And the other alternative that I'd like to suggest, and we, I notice we've got lots of school buses, and they're driving around back and forth to schools all the time, including the CGS folks. And it may very well be that we could identify some students, and maybe that would be a target, to have three students from each of the other high schools, or, I don't know, just thinking out loud. But I think that would give those other students in other schools a sense that at least we have an opportunity to participate, and it would certainly give us some instruction and experience in how we can develop programs in the future.
Sure. Mr. Blaine, in short order, to answer some of your questions, since this is a pilot program, it is for these two schools. And also, what has previously been mentioned, it's quite an honor to be two out of the eight schools in all of the high schools across the state of Virginia in the Commonwealth. So the idea of with this pilot would hopefully be to expand it at some point, but under the parameters of how this was selected at a pilot at this point, it is at these two school sites. But our hope would be to include all five of our high schools at some point, based off the information that we get. And I think a follow-up from this committee in regards to one of Mr. Laura's questions earlier about the demographics of the students and who are, who choose to take part of this program, would be information to present before the board so that you could see the opportunity that happens to exist and how it has impacted our students across the board.
When you have rules, you have to operate within them, and I appreciate that. Perhaps, in order to respond to some of the need for the diversity economically and geographically, there are some options that might be available for some qualified student to get bused or whatever, I'm assuming, from what you said or not?
Well, this opportunity would exist for Riverbend students and Mass upon X High School students, under the constraints of the pilot program at this point. So since it is a pilot that has been awarded to us through College Board, we're going to work within the parameters, with all due respect, we're going to work within the parameters of this program, so we can give them information back as they look to expand this pilot across the Commonwealth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Meyer.
Just a short kudos for bringing this to us and for the selection. As you were expressing the parameters, explain to us the parameters of this program, both seminar and research. I'm going to use an example. One evening, I was up in Baltimore at my son-in-law's house, and he said his boss had said to him, I understand, he's a chemist, he's a researcher. The task given to him was, if it's 22 degrees Celsius and 50% humidity, raise the temperature to 50 degrees Celsius and tell me what the humidity's going to be. That was his task for the weekend. He had to come in Monday morning and report what he found. I said, "Why don't you just Google it?" He said, "I can." He said, "That's what I'm going to do." He was going to Google it, but it isn't sufficient just to Google, because, just because someone said this, someone else could say something a little different. Someone, he said, "I'd have to justify the research behind the base of the decision. I can't just go in with, this is an answer from Google Marie," who said, you know, like we always say, "Google it, Marie." You know, I can't go that way. I have to be able to justify it. That's the world that the scientists live in, and he's a chemist, he's a scientist, for Johns Hopkins. So that's the world that we're preparing our students to go into, to use the technology that's there, but to be able to do the, in a seminar base or in a research base. And I say, you know, kudos to exactly what you were doing, and kudos to our two high schools for being selected, because we have an opportunity for Spotsylvania to be able to shine and be part of this and help to unfold this program that is research-based, it's seminar-based, and is preparing our future students for those opportunities across all walks of life. No matter where they're coming from, they have an equal opportunity to be able to use this to be our future scientists. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to thank Mr. Laura for his astute comments in terms of bringing up the issue of diversity, and I would like to offer a comment, as was mentioned, when we had a discussion about the International Bachelorate, and we had a discussion with Principal Davis about some ways to attract minority students into the program. And one way we can do that is taking advantage of centers of influence like the James Farmer Scholars and so forth, and actively recruit and promote that within that body. And we also, to be quite frank with you, we need, and we've had, and I don't know if it's just a, it's an issue that we need to address countywide in terms of having African-American teachers in the program themselves. They become your greatest salespeople when you have them in the right place and you use them in a way to attract minority students to take advantage of these programs. For example, my son took some AP classes at Cortland High School. Mr. Marx was on him like Ray Rice, and eventually, he took a couple of those classes. He had no intention of doing it initially, but he was inspired by Mr. Marx's leadership. And so I would say to you, if you're really serious about attracting minority students, look at centers of influence and look at African-American teachers to be the salespeople of that program. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just had, once again, the accolades, two of our Spotsia schools with 436 worldwide, and we're two of those. That's amazing, so that just, that shows what a wonderful division we are. You mentioned probably two programs per school, and we would love to have more. What about the teachers? Do we have the teachers to teach the students, and is, what's that going to do with their other classes and class sizes and such?
That's a very good question. The administrators of those sites have identified the staff within. It does not come, at this point, with any new staffing, but we are working with them at this point, within the parameters. The main cost of this program is really the professional development, having to identify those teachers early enough to get them to the training that has been identified through College Board. And so those principals have been working with them in order to secure those individuals to teach these courses.
Okay, that's great. And then one more, just tacking on to that, with the AP diploma, the Capstone Diploma, right now, you said it looks like they'd start the seminar class as a junior and then the research class as a senior. Would they know, they might not know then by the time they put in their college applications, or would they just said that they are applying for the Capstone, kind of like the IB, that they're, it's on the, it's on the works? Or would that, could they take it, begin it as a sophomore, take the research as a just junior, and then by the time they put in those apps, they already know that they have, they're going to have that Capstone Diploma?
It is possible that they take the first course in 10th grade and then the second course in 11th grade, and they would know at the time of the college application. More likely, it would be similar to the IB program, where the student would indicate that they are a candidate for an AP Capstone Diploma at the point that they're applying.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments? Thank you so much. This was wonderful, very informative. Thank you.
That's the kind of attitude that makes us a terrific district, you see, terrific.
6.03, synergy update, Ms. Clenard? And Dr. Strike?
Good evening again. This is a very exciting evening, as both special reports are really geared to our strategic plan coming to life, so that's very exciting. Tonight, as another special report, the Board will learn about the progress of the new Student Information System synergy, including the rollout date for staff and parents, the benefits of our program, and the communication efforts. And this evening, we have Dr. Jan Strike. And this evening, we have Dr. Jan Strike, Director of Growth and Innovation, to do the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Flannard. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. I'm going to go ahead and get our presentation started. And I think it's really timely with the Capstone AP, just finishing up, to talk about the fact that without the data related to students, and where students are going, and what programs they're in, we can't coordinate all these wonderful programs that we're starting. So, what I wanted to do, because when we adopted Synergy, when you all voted for Edgewood Points Synergy Student Information System, it was November 2013, and I do believe we have at least one new board member. So, what I thought that I would do was give you a little background in history on what a student information system does, and why we decided to move to a new one, and then very quickly and efficiently try to tell you where we are and where we're going. Student Information System really is the engine that drives all the information regarding every student and their academic career. So, it has the components, basically, of attendance, grading, management, and scheduling. And then, lots of other things get connected to it. And essentially, when you think about our strategic plan, and where we're headed with really centralizing student learning, personalizing student learning experiences, teachers being able to solve problems, working in PLCs, the idea that data is at their fingertips has become a high priority for us in the school division. And these different processes that are highlighted in the black texts on your presentation describe all the different stakeholders that are involved, that in some way are influenced by the accuracy of the data and the efficient flow of the data to their desktops or to their classrooms. So, again, if you think in terms of a car, it's the engine that runs the machine. It all points to, really, the teaching and learning processes in the classroom. And without a student information system, you basically don't have a lot of information to drive today's classroom with our diverse population of students. Why did we replace our student information system? Most of the folks who might be listening tonight, or those folks that are going to be impacted beginning on February 16th, have spent some of their career time in a screen that looks like this. This is our current iSeries. It's been branded the infamous green screen, and it's going away midnight, February 15th. And those folks that are using the green screen can tell you that it's a DOS-type program. When you all voted to move towards a graphic user interface in November of 2013, you moved these folks into, really, the 21st century, because much of the functionality in this program requires you to do multiple steps to actually get one piece of data. Right now, there are about 400, a little over 400 folks that access the iSeries. And because we're moving to Synergy, and the main screen of Synergy, those 455 people on February 16th will access a screen that looks just like this. So, we're a little more familiar with working with our technology and our different applications that we use day-to-day, using an interface that's similar to this one. In addition to those 455 folks, those same 455 folks will include your administrators and folks that have higher-level access. So, part of tonight's presentation is to talk to you about how Synergy is actually the architectural framework for the foundation that every other application that we have will eventually link to, if it isn't going to link to it on February 16th. For our administrators and school-level leaders, they will use the screen you just saw, but they will also be able to connect right from a cellphone or tablet, from anywhere in our network. They can also connect from home if they need, if they need to do that on their cellphones. So, the benefits to administrators, I'm not going to read them all to you, the idea that data is at your fingertips, communication with parents and with staff at your fingertips. And when I say "coming soon," they may not see these particular features activated on the morning of February 16th, next Monday, but eventually, they will be able to actually use this app to do an emergency report for their school, and it has safety features in it, and also create master schedules in Synergy. I want to talk to you about the architectural of Synergy itself. I'm going to simplify it, we, I didn't want to get into a lot of the technological components of Synergy. Synergy is the main, basic application. And as I had stated, a little over 400 folks will be using Synergy, and I've represented that by the big blue circle. The other components of Synergy are named after the stakeholders that will access them next Monday, ParentView, TeacherView, and StudentView. So, as you can see, there are components that are attached to Synergy, they not, they aren't necessarily inside Synergy. That's because of the expansive extension to, from 455 users to potentially over 50,000 users that'll be using components of Synergy. So, for example, Parents, PASS will go away, Teachers will now be part of our Student Information System, and they will use the component called TeacherView. And every student will see something very similar to what their parents see, and they can access that through their devices, and that's called StudentView. Synergy SE is the Special Education component, and that's a little different in that it overlaps the Synergy mainframe. And so, in other words, it shares and integrates the same data as Synergy, whereas the data flow for these other three components move from Synergy to those other components. The only time, for example, you would have the black arrow in this presentation slide here go both ways, is when a teacher is ready, when we're ready to produce a report card, the TeacherView grade book, because IG Pro will be retired on February 16th, that would actually go the other way. So, it's not a back-and-forth, continuous, it actually just draws data, and it's one big program. Very quickly, this is not a chronological timeline, what this is, is just highlights of what the folks have been doing in information systems and in technology. They would be with me tonight, but they are actually at Data Central, doing some of the back-entry data, in order to be ready for our rollout on February 16th. I do want to mention that the project managers, Pete Zakary, our Assistant Director, and Jay Perry, our Lead Programmer on this project, have done an outstanding job in the last year at converting files and data, and I'll get into some of those statistics shortly here. After we purchased Synergy, November, December, we began learning ourselves what Synergy was all about. We partnered and collaborated with Virginia Ski, excuse me, Virginia Beach City Schools, Arlington, Stafford has collaborated with us. There are a number of school divisions in Virginia that have adopted Edgewood Points product. Then, my role and responsibility, along with many of the ITRTs and a huge sub-user group that has been outstanding, is our TeacherView training teams. Each school, we developed a TrainingView, a TeacherView training team at each school, and we launched that professional learning for that, for those groups last spring and summer. Our teacher group is one of the largest groups that'll use this every day, so we started early with that change management process. Data conversion, don't want to get too technical, but your data conversion and your data validation and your entry started last May and has continued through the Christmas holiday, and we are working in our evenings to be ready for the rollout on Monday morning. So, the last piece there with those dates, so that you all can help us communicate to our community and our stakeholders, the main Synergy launch is Monday morning. TeacherView, in TeacherView, teachers will take attendance Monday morning. ParentView rolls out February 20th. StudentView will follow shortly thereafter. And then, Synergy SE, the Special Ed component, is a soft launch, and that will be a phase in throughout the spring semester. Since May 2014, over 6 million student records have been converted and migrated from the iSeries to Synergy. I don't know if you understand the volume and the depth and the breadth of that, but I can give you a few statistics. Over 2 million transcripts were converted and migrated, 200,000 schedule records, half a million grade records, and over 1.7 million test score records, to give you a sense of the volume of data that has been moved from the iSeries to our new Synergy product. This is a look at what teachers will see on Monday morning when they go to take attendance. All of our students' photos, if we have photos, will be in front of our teachers on their desktops, and they simply take attendance by clicking on the picture. You also see in this particular sample that I have up on the screen, that there is information, such as allergies, if that is shared with us, those will be available to those teachers in those classrooms. And any other type of special education accommodations will eventually be sitting right under that student's ID. It's a highly secure interface, and that data, right now, teachers would have to go find that on a piece of paper. We are not, we, they will now be able to do that in a very digital, secure way within our network. Teachers also have a mobile app, and I don't want to read the benefits for our teachers, they're listed for you. I think for teachers, what's exciting for them is there's no grade collection, they, this is now their grade book for the end of nine weeks, very easy to take that attendance, and of course, contact information for parents, schedules, SOL test scores, and they're just clicks away. Coming soon, if appropriate, if the YEP team agrees, those general ed teachers that have had in the past to collaborate with those special ed teachers face-to-face to get information, all the Synergy SE information that's appropriate, and we have permission, will be shared with the general ed teachers, so that will also be at their fingertips. This is a ParentView screen, so our parents' PASS is going away, parents will now be able to see every one of their students. This is an example, this is not a live example, but use your imagination, and those three students could be three students for one parent. They will be able to, with one click, see a screen just like this for every student that they have here in Spotsylvania County Schools. And I'm going to segue real quick to the StudentView mobile app and come back to the ParentView mobile app here in just a minute. The reason for that is, the StudentView mobile app is exactly mirrors the ParentView program. So, whether or not you're happy about this, students will be able to see their own grades at all times, there's no excuse for not knowing what your assignment is, and you can get school division messages and also school messages. They can also contact their teacher, just with a click on their cellphone device or their tablet. You're looking actually at Pete Zakary's son, who we owe a great thanks to the Zakary family, they have been the example and the sample, with permission, so that we could test a lot of our product. Here's the ParentView mobile app. Real-time update, parents have had to wait, as soon as a teacher enters a grade or enters an assignment, a parent will actually have that grade at their fingertips if they choose to check their mobile app. And what I like about this as a parent is the ability to make sure they update their contact information, to verify attendance information, and it's accessible from any iOS or Android device. A note on the ParentView rollout, again, I said potentially 50,000 end-users with this system. So, when we moved email, and we went through that change management process, we knew that communication was very important to the change and to preparing everybody. In terms of ParentView, we have sent out a letter to inform parents, our Office of Public Information, with the help of Renee Daniels, that PASS was going away and ParentView was coming. Because of the level of information, the abundance of information that's now available in the ParentView app, the security and the recommended security and safe practices that we would like to promote from now, or beginning February 12th through the 20th, when ParentView goes live, is that parents make a visit into their schools and pick up their specialized access code. And to really support that, we have established ParentView pickup stations and have manned those with technology and extra staff in elementary, in our middle and high schools. And for those parents that can't make it in to pick up their access code, during the daytime hours, we have five geographic locations we're setting up in our high schools. So, high schools will focus on, in the evenings, being able to provide parents that additional access code. For parents, we understand that some parents won't be able to come in, parents can contact, and we are working on a communication plan, there will be ways for those parents to get their access code. But I know I don't have to emphasize anymore the importance of security information as we roll out our new SIS, where everybody can come together, share information, so we can make good decisions for kids. And that's just part of that process for our parents. There will be a letter, from what I understand, within the next 24 hours, again, going out to parents through our Office of Public Information, explaining this. We have several support sites, we will also be launching a website for our parents. Last week, at our parent conferences, we were giving out a training aid that tells them exactly how to log on, and that will be available along with video. We also have our Synergy support sites already up for our teachers and our TeacherView trainers. I'm going to end with, part of our change management was branding this entire process, and I will tell you that it is showtime February 16th, Monday morning, when everybody reports in for school. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. If I can't answer them, I know that Mrs. Flannard and also Tedra Richardson are available to answer those questions. Mrs. Blalock?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You talked about the, when we saw an example of what the teachers will see now with the children's faces and their allergies and whatnot, how would that work with a substitute teacher?
I do believe with a substitute teacher, they would be able to access that, but we have to set that up yet. We do not have the substitute teachers ready to go. But substitute teachers will be able to have a screen and have a login with their substitute teaching. They're going to have to because of attendance.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, they have to take attendance too, which would concern me, because if the child has an IEP, they do not have access to that IEP, nor should they, so how will we protect that?
There are little apps within Synergy, so I can't say that that's going to happen on February 16th. So, if we have a substitute on February 16th, they'll be taking attendance using a piece of paper, okay, for those students. But those applications, we still have to work into, to our Synergy program for special populations.
Okay, so, so starting February 16th, we will not have the child's personal information or something that would violate FERPA available under their picture at that time?
That's part of, the whole FERPA piece and HIPAA piece, first of all, HealthMaster is being integrated into Synergy, but your HealthMaster and health information is not going to be in Synergy at this launch date. And your question relates very, very much to that piece. Synergy SE is also a soft launch, so that's also coming in, so a lot of those pieces have to be worked out yet.
Okay, so that's, the IEPs are not going to be on there, starting next week?
No, no. A soft launch, what I meant by that was...
I understand what a soft launch is, I was just asking, was that going to start on the 16th, or is that something that you're going to work into?
It's phased in.
And the other part is the access code. When you want to call your bank or something, you can just go through security questions. Is there not a way we could have parents call and go through security questions, or a way to get their access codes, so we don't have to have them come into the school?
We're working on that process. In terms of the Synergy system, the Synergy system does not have that built in, but we actually are working on a way in which parents can get their access code, and that's forthcoming. We recommend a face-to-face. Part of that is... Part of that is, is we're moving data on student addresses, student information, and part of what we would like to do is interface with our parents because, for the first time, we're connecting student to student, whether you're at Freedom Middle or whether you're at Smith Station, we want to make sure that the parents are seeing all their students and we can provide that information in a face-to-face conversation if they come in and visit. But we will have other ways for our parents to get their access code.
Yeah, and of course, face-to-face is always good, especially in a situation like this, but it is, we're trying to go high-tech, and this is, it seemed a little step backwards to have them come in for something like this.
I can understand why you might believe that or think that, but when you think about the fact that we're moving 6 million data files and we want to make sure that the student information access gets in the hands of the parent and the parent is able to verify that, the idea that we'd go through a face-to-face and parents can come in and talk about the student information system and what changes we have since we're retiring Pass, we thought was the best approach.
I'm not saying it's a bad approach, I'm just saying there's 24,000 students, so that's a lot of face-to-face we've got to get very quickly.
Yes, I think that, I want everybody to understand who, in our viewer audience, that the parents don't have to come in at a certain time, they can come in in phases, or they can actually contact us and we'll be able to get them their access code.
Okay, and then my question to that one was, their access code is needed to get in there, I'm assuming. So let's say you have a parent that isn't available to come in until, let's say, the 26th of the month. From the 16th to the 26th, they will just not, Pass will be completely gone, there will be no way to access, is that correct?
Pass goes away on the 16th of February.
So let's say the parents come in on the 26th, or the next week is when they're back in town from a business trip, for example. So for that week, they will not be able to access, is that correct?
For the week of, from February 16th to the 20th.
Yeah, just from whenever they go in and get their access code. What happens in that time? Is it a dormant time for the...
No, actually, it'll begin to update in Synergy on February 20th, it'll open on February 20th, and if you don't come in and get your access code...
That's what I'm asking.
Before February 20th, the data will be in there when you do access it. But if you're on a business trip and you want to access it, the best thing, the best thing that we can do is offer alternatives, which will be shared with our principals tomorrow and be out as part of our change management.
I think that's what I'm saying, I think I would like to see some alternatives, because I know that there's going to be some parents, they're not going to be in town, they're not able to come in right away. And let's see, I have one more question for you, and you feel, you got that.
Thank you.
You answered it already, thank you.
Any other questions?
Dr. Baker had a comment.
I just wanted to follow up on that, because I think that that may be a recurring theme over the next few weeks, but I'm aware that part of the consideration, Dr. Strike, was, and even the taking, really about a year before we launched, had to do with a lot of collaboration with divisions who had launched previously, and examining things that they had tried to do that they would, now after doing it, would go in retrospect and make some adjustments. And I think part of that was the whole having people come in in terms of security, because folks had tried it differently. However, I think the conversations have also, to Mrs. Blaylock's point, been pretty extensive, that we can't reasonably expect that all, however many thousand, parents and folks that need that access are going to be able to drop and get that. But we want, I think the most important consideration is, we would rather have a delay and an inconvenience and discomfort than any even a perception that the privacy isn't of utmost importance for our students.
Yes, our collaborative Virginia partners tried different ways, email, US mail, and there was confusion and frustration on the part of parents because we cannot guarantee that that's private student information gets to the right parent at all times, based on the data that we have in the student information system in the rollout. So collaboratively with instruction, I see Mrs. Flannard beside me here, this has been a long conversation about how best to do this, and we based it on the recommendations of actually four different school divisions. And in actuality, we are going to offer some other alternatives, but I'm going to emphasize that student information and private information about all of us and any of us right now in our climate, it's really important to pay attention to getting that access code, and when you get it, change your password right away. And that's the value of coming in, because we can take folks step-by-step and really verify, make sure their students are lined up in the parent view app, so we have that all corrected. Because we know in a rollout this big, there are probably going to be some students that aren't connected yet, and we just want to make sure that that's all in step. Do you want to comment, Mrs. Flannard?
Can I have a follow-up while we're talking about the access code? I have children at Lee Hill and Massaponics, do I attend both?
No, you don't have to.
You just go to one school, so, okay.
Good point, thank you.
I have several questions, mainly, security is one of the basic ones. If you're a member of Anthem, for example, in the latest hacking of that group, social security numbers were stolen, which is a very dangerous type of thing. And I'm just very concerned, and I know you are, but how are we going to protect ourselves against hacking or whatever goes on?
Well, there are a number of processes, procedures, but I don't want to share all of them with you, because if I could write a few paragraphs privately and supply them to the board, I would. So part of that is something that I don't want all of our viewers that might be listening to know about, but I can tell you this, and it might help you a little bit, Mr. Blaine, in terms of the Synergy product, for the most part, the folks that are using the Synergy product are using it on the web, but it is not on the internet, it is on our network. So those that are accessing it from parent view, and that's why I took the time to show you the architecture of Synergy, if you notice, they're going into parent view, which is slightly disconnected from the main Synergy piece. That in itself is an architectural piece that Edgeworth built into the product, okay? So that previous slide that I showed you basically helps with that. The other point is encryption, and I know Anthem had encryption. And our technology staff, that's the tech support staff, led by our lead engineer, Mark Darden and Crystal Coleman, there's a lot of encryption that we have built into our system, and in addition, there are other measures that we're taking. I can share this one publicly with you, that we not only do penetration tests on our own, to our own products, we also hire outsiders. So that's best practice, we hire outside companies and pay for that service.
Well, I've assumed that you've looked at that carefully, but that was just a caution. I guess the area that I'm more concerned with is, how are we going to handle the high school student who's now 18 years old and now has control of his own destiny and his parents have no legal right to access that information?
Maybe Mrs. Flannard can comment on that piece, so I will hand the microphone to
The same way that we actually do now, the only difference is that we have an electronic version. So it's very similar to the way that we have special education and we have students that have control over their own IEP, so the process itself doesn't change, it's just really the way that we talk to our students and our communities about it. Now we just have an electronic version, but the process is still there.
Well, most parents are going to have access regardless, but for the one where there's a problem, it's not a good thing. But the general, how about those parents who have limited English, who don't have any kind of computer whatsoever, in the rural area where, well, if you said it's not going to be available through the web anyway?
Parent view would be available on the internet, and that has a different security protocol that we're following. But in terms of access, accessibility, Mr. Blaine, to something that runs like this, parents always can go to the school or the school, connect with the school via the phone, all right, but this system is providing more access in digital ways to our constituents. Your other question was about language. This particular program has the capability, at the click of a button, where the menu bars, the toolbars will translate to Spanish. So is that working right now? We're working on that this week. Those are final-touch features, so when you're doing a vanilla launch, what I mean by vanilla is the flavor, not all the enhancements, not all the special apps, might be working on February 16th, but they will be.
Do you have enough staff? You're describing a lot of activities.
I can tell you that this staff, in terms of its energy level, in terms of the stakeholder group, and to elaborate a bit on that, if you're talking about instructional technology staff, this particular migration and conversion involved more than instructional technologists. We had administrators, our front office staff have been working in the evening, during the days. This has been truly a team effort, and that training piece, it has been the focus of everything we do, everything we've done over the last year. It is definitely an intense time now, but I will also tell you, because you have specialists that access that data and know that data really well, we prefer to use them because they can look at the data closer than anybody else could.
Once this is implemented, I guess that's where it is. What you've described is a lot of questions coming to every school, it seems to me, anyway. And are we, is that school secretary getting a lot of special training? Do they have enough help there? There's no answer to these questions, but I'm saying these are certainly concerns.
Well, let's look at it from what they were doing with the I Series. I believe that they would agree, that the number of clicks were eliminated, the number of green screens were eliminating with a graphic user interface, is actually going to improve their efficiency of their work and what they can accomplish. When you think about the time that it saves an administrator and a teacher from going into a file room to look up in a student cume, the paper, I actually believe that after the launch, and after folks are using this on a daily basis, they will feel liberated from the I Series. It also allows us, from a technological piece, because we've had these conversations before about instructional technology, to actually work more efficiently with what we have to do now. Because right now with the I Series, we have to dedicate a programmer to writing apps in order to extract data, and we know that that data has not been 100% what our end-users are looking for. So we've kind of mitigated all those antiquated tasks, and we're rolling forward with a different workflow process.
It's an exciting time, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
I have a follow-up. I think that, just listening to your answers, and I agree, I liked Mr. Blaine's questions quite a bit, because I had some of the same myself. It's not that we don't have to be sold on this thing, we already voted on it, we like it, and everybody wants to move forward. You don't have to talk to me about advancing in technology, I'm on board with you. I think, just listening to, do we have enough staff? Who would someone call? Who would I call as a mom or a dad if I had questions? Where do they go? Those things, we just want to make sure are taken care of before we launch, we don't want to have it out there, no one know what to do. I don't want to have parents out there two or three weeks without access to their children's, all their data, their data, their grades, everything that they're used to seeing every day. And again, that access code concerns me, asking every single parent to be in by a certain time with it launching in a week is asking a lot. So I think that, I mean, look at parent teacher conference night, ask the teachers, how many parents come in? Have you ever walked through the high school hallways on that night?
I just want to reiterate, you can come in at any time for an access code, but for the initial launch, if you want to get into parent view on February 20th, we're offering those extra times for you. And I do know, Mrs. Flannard, do you want to comment on our other ways to get the access code?
I do, and I think that, Ms. Blaylock, you make a great point, because we do have a, it is a very critical time, and I agree that you're, not everybody's going to be available for a week and a half timeframe, and so what I think that we are working on is that balance of making sure that, yes, we want our parents to come in, but at the same time, we need to be very realistic and considerate of our families, that that's not feasible. And so we are going to be looking at, if they give us permission to do it a different way, such as an email, then we can certainly do that. Our first preference would be face-to-face, but we need to be considerate of our community and our community needs. So we do have other opportunities for them to contact the school and say, that's great, but it doesn't fit me, and so I can't do what you're asking me to do, and so can I do it this way or that way? And then we were going to address the principals tomorrow, after the superstar, actually, to talk about making sure that we are an open and we are very conducive to what our communities need.
Dr. Baker, you had something? No, great. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you ladies very much.
Thank you.
Compliments on a great job.
Okay, consent agenda, item 7.01, 7.02. Dr. Martin, could you let us know what's in that, please?
On the consent agenda, this evening, the minutes of the January 20th special meeting, January 26 budget work session, and the January 26 regular meeting, and donations which are usual and customary, staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved. I'll second that.
So, Dr. Meyer, you're approving, making a motion to approve the consent agenda, and Mr. Blaine, a second. All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0. Thank you. Okay, on to 8.01, approval of resolution for African-American History Month, Ms. Flannard.
I'm not sure why I left, I got confused, I think, on the agenda, so I apologize. During the month of February each year, Spotsylvania County Public Schools celebrates African-American History Month. Traditionally, each school participates in a variety of activities in the context of several disciplines and on various grade levels. A resolution of support is attached for the board's consideration before you this evening and its administration's recommendation that the school board adopts the proposed resolution in support of African-American History Month for Spotsylvania County Public Schools.
Before we make a motion, I'm going to ask Mr. Braswell to read, and then we can make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The resolution reads, "Resolution in support of African-American History Month, Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Whereas African-American History Month is intertwined with the development of America and its study provides an essential perspective of life in America today, and whereas knowledge of African-American history enhances personal and intellectual development and advances communication among individuals and the family, the school, the community, the state, the nation, and the world, and whereas African-American men and women have made significant contributions to the growth, prosperity, and character of America, and whereas African-American history is promoted by the cooperative efforts of educators, parents, businesses, local governing bodies, industry, and members of the community and professional organizations of all backgrounds. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the month of February is to be recognized as African-American History Month in Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Signed, Don A. Shelley, Chair, Spotsylvania County."
May I have a motion accepted?
I'd like to make that motion, Madam Chair.
Mr. Laura?
Second.
Second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, on to 8.02, the approval of our budget. Okay, I'm just getting my notes up here. The fiscal year 2016 budget was developed with an open dialogue and trust among staff, parents, and the entire community. The budget process included projecting student enrollment, estimating expenditure needs to support schools, programs, and services, and projecting revenues as well as... and projecting revenues, as well as estimating capital improvement needs and its impact on the operating budget. Throughout the process, we held two public hearings to receive input from stakeholders. We held work sessions to review information and receive reports from staff. The school board's goal in developing the approved budget was to maintain the overall strength of Spotsylvania County Schools as a high-performing school division while sustaining, restoring, and providing resources and services valued by students, parents, staff, and the community. The fiscal year 2016 budget includes a 3% COLA for all contracted employees, so our starting salary for teachers would be over $40,000. Reduction of the athletic fee by 25%, restore teaching positions to support the division's growing diversity, and promote success to our struggling and gifted students, as well as many other needs to contribute to the success of Spotsylvania County Public Schools. As of today, the budget does include a $3.1 million budget shortfall. However, based on bills coming in from the House and Senate, which include a 1.5% pay raise and additional reductions in the VRS rate, we are hopeful that the budget shortfall of $3.1 million will go down. Staff will have the exact fiscal impact for Spotsylvania County Schools by Friday, February 13. Then, the budget shortfall will be adjusted accordingly. As a reminder, the Board of Supervisors will receive their budget presentation tomorrow. We will present our approved budget to the Board of Supervisors Tuesday, February 17. The Board of Supervisors will decide on a tax rate to advertise. And we will have a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors on March 24. I left off my date, I believe it was March 10, but I could be wrong there. The Board of Supervisors' public hearing on the budget and the tax rate is scheduled for March, till March 26, at Cortland High School. Approval of the county and the school's budget and tax rate on April 14. The school board work session on April 27 and May 4, we will have work sessions, and we will plan on adopting our budget on May 11. May I have a motion to approve the 2016 budget as presented, which totals, I'll get my exact number,
Madam Chair, I'd be more than happy to make that motion.
Dr. Meyer and Mrs. Blaylock as a second. And we have, I think Ms. Blaylock seconded, so thank you. Do we have some discussion?
I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. I'm very much in favor of this budget. I would like frankly to see us spending more money in the area of primary grades and reading especially, and mathematics, coaches and assistants and that type of thing in the classroom. I think we've done a great job. I'm a sincere compliment to our administrative staff. I think you're great, and I think most of us will appreciate that. However, I think we still are not putting enough money into the primary grades. And when there's a bridge to repair or something like that, if it doesn't get repaired, you can work around it for a while. But if we miss the foundation at the first or second or third grade, those children pay for that the rest of their lives. And that's why it's important. So, I throw that caution in, but I'm ready to vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Any other comments?
Just a comment of support to Dr. Baker and his staff. It was a very good budget for us. We were able to do some restoration. We were able to head back in the right direction. And Ms. Shelley has already cited the different, went down a bullet point of the different things that we are very pleased with. So, I just wanted to congratulate you all and thank you for presenting a budget that I can wholeheartedly support.
Madam Chair, diddle, diddle, diddle.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Laura, I'm sorry.
You heard me speak about the budget earlier, and I will simply add that for a number of years now, we've seen reduction, reduction, reduction. We can't continue this way. I will say to you that communities don't go bad overnight. There's a great book out there called The Broken Window Syndrome, and I'll give you the Reader Digest version of it. If you take a nice, middle-class community, and the family has a tragedy, they get divorced, or the bank forecloses on them, the house now belongs to the bank. So, soon kid comes by and breaks a window. But because the house is owned by a bank that might be in another town, no one replaces that window. So, the next day, the same kid breaks another window. And this goes on. The grass doesn't get cut. The neighborhood's not deteriorating yet. But then, after a while, someone breaks into the back door and steal all the plumbing, all the pipes and what have you. Nobody calls the police, because it's owned by a bank in another city. Next thing you know, homeless people move in, drug dealers move in, and the neighbors next door who are renting the houses, "I can't live here." They move away. That house is now owned by a bank. And the same thing happens to that house. Before you, that's how bad neighborhoods are created. I will submit to you that unless we care, unless we treasure what we have here, the community will suffer. We've replaced over 300, we reduced the staff by 300 through a retirement program that I supported. We have another retirement program that I support. But I will submit to you that the teachers coming in are brand-new. Quite frankly, they're not as good as the ones that are leaving. So, even in that area where the positions are being filled, we're still suffering. For those of you that are football fans, if Tom Brady and Manning retire tomorrow, they can be replaced by Mariota and Jamie Winston. But those two kids are not as good as Brady and, you know. It takes a while to become a master teacher. We're losing not only position, but we're losing master teachers. And we need to, as a community, speak up on behalf of our children. Quite frankly, it's not even about teachers, although you know I love them very much. It's about the children. It's about the future of Spotsylvania. And we need to find our voice in a polite and professional way, speak in unison, and say, "The time has come for Spotsylvania to step up to the plate, and let's take care of all of our children." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Do you have something? Okay, sorry. Ms. Grant?
Grant, aye.
Blaine, aye. Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Laura, aye.
Shelley, aye. Pass the 7-0. On to 8.03. The second reading approval for policy updates. This is our second reading for the staff reviewed, received policy updates from the Virginia School Boards Association in October 2014. These updates were reviewed by staff, and last, on January 26, we had our first reading approval. Now, they're being recommended for a second reading approval. So, it is that the school board recommends the approval for second reading, the proposed revisions identified by the VSBA, October 2014 policy checklist, and policy index manual documents as presented. May I have a motion, please?
I will move the recommended action.
So, Mr. Blaine, to approve the policies for second reading? And a second, please?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. All those in favors of the policies, aye, please?
Aye.
Any nay? All favor, 7-0. 8.04. Second reading approval. "As a part of the school board's deliberate and thoughtful process to review the division's policies in a timely manner, there were 28 policies being reviewed at this time. The recommended revisions received first reading approval on January 26, 2015, and staff is seeking a second reading this evening. It is recommended that the school board, we approve these policy revisions as outlined in the five-year cyclical policy manual and checklist as presented." May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Dr. Meyer has approved second reading of the five-year policy review. And a second?
I will second.
Mr. Blaine? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Okay, 7-0. Approval of the 2015-16 calendar. Mrs. Flannard?
Good evening again. And as you are all aware, the Code of Virginia requires each local school division to develop its own instructional calendar to specify the dates of when school will be open. This evening, we are requesting the board to vote on the 2015-16 instructional calendar. And as a reminder to the public, a calendar committee comprised of parents, teachers, and staff, led by the three principals, solicited input from our community for considerations and its administration's recommendation that the school board approve the 2015-16 instructional calendar as presented.
May I have a motion to approve, please? Motion by Mr. Laura. And a second by Mrs. Blaylock. Do we have some discussion? Dr. Baker?
Just wanted to extend the comments before. I know the board wants to have a discussion, but I wanted to share a couple of comments before you have your discussion, and also will help answer any other questions that come up tonight. I wanted to make sure that it was crystal clear for the school board as we get into this rather complex discussion on a calendar for next year, that I wanted to remind the board that the committee that was commissioned really began with my commissioning the same type of committee a couple of years ago. And it was I that tasked them with developing a process to try to achieve a multitude of objectives relative to the instructional calendar, also to include trying to engage the community as much as possible, and really to even engage the board. As I previously recalled, that the board wanted to be engaged in the process of the calendar development, because it's certainly something that you receive a lot of feedback on within your respective communities. Having said that, I want to congratulate that committee on once again doing an extremely fine job of trying to tackle a series of immediate, short-term, and long-term objectives that the superintendent selfishly laid upon them. Because I'm very interested in how we continue to look at our instructional time to best benefit our students and the staff that are implementing instruction across the county. With that, it's real important, as you go through the discussion tonight, and I know you'll have no trouble with this part, or I'm asking you not to have any trouble. Any problems or concerns regarding process fall solely at the feet of this superintendent, because everything that I asked that committee to do, they did. And so, unfortunately, we know that this is a hot topic. There's a lot of different perspectives that we weigh. But I appreciate the board tackling this very difficult subject and all the different feedback and perspectives that you have to weigh when trying to make that decision. But I did want to make sure it was clear that I think the committee did a fine job and continues to do a fine job. Even the timing of tonight's recommendation falls upon this superintendent, because I have not urged them to meet an earlier fall deadline or a two-year ahead-of-time deadline so that we could actively be looking at possibilities for the future, as well as not putting the board in a position to have to amend a calendar if we determined that we had prematurely adopted one. So, I understand the discomfort that that can cause for a lot of folks, but I wanted to make sure that it was clear that that was at the direction of this superintendent. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
Madam Chair, as part of the calendar committee, and I want to thank Dr. Baker and the committee as the board member representative on that committee, when it discussed, you know, the post-Labor Day and the impacts on the schedule, then it came up with, well, we need to look at also before, so we can inform the board, which they did. The modifications to the calendar, to the timing in synchronizing elementary, middle, and high, so as we do not get into a repeat of, if we get a snowbogeden, and all of a sudden, we're having to make up 20, 25 minutes from March through end of May or June, that we would avoid that kind of situation. The committee did look at a number of options, and the board then discussed those in a work session a week ago. And we sort of coalesced around the post-Labor Day, because that's the way the survey that was conducted throughout the community two years ago identified that that's where the community support was. And understanding, the calendar committee then wanted to say, "Okay, but if that is it, you know, do you not want to know the other two?" Well, as a board member, I'm not going to tell a committee, "You can't do this. You can't do that." That's not my role. And even voting in the calendar committee, I do not vote. I'm ex officio. I hear. I listen. I learn. One of the things that I did ask Mrs. Flannard, and she graciously presented, was the map to show, you know, the divisions across the Commonwealth that are post and those that are pre. And it's kind of interesting to see, the pre is all southwest, southwest of us. And the pre, the post-Labor Day is moving further east from us, with now the exception of King George. And I've heard the arguments placed on the AP tests and needing the five extra days in order to be able to achieve the results with the students. And that is an argument. But I also have to ask, if that is such a convincing argument, how is it that 62 divisions or 61 divisions that have a post-Labor Day, do they not also have the same problem? And I would have to also ask the question, if we have data that supports that a pre necessarily has shown improvement in the success of those students that are on the pre side? And I'm part of the committee, and while I may be a minority, but to me, it still makes a lot of sense. If the students aren't in school, and I'll go back to what I said at the workshop time. When I tracked enrollment, the students were not there until after Labor Day. And it was a difference of 1,000-plus students who were not in school. So, that means the teachers then have to redo or, you know, start all over again after Labor Day. We talked also about consistency within our region and with the regional programs. I know there are pros and cons, but I'm going to support the recommendation for the post-Labor Day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Grant?
I just wanted to reiterate that I also thank the calendar committee for their hard work. I really like the two other modifications to the calendar this year with the time and the half-days. I think that makes total sense, and that is fantastic. I did want to make a point that I spoke with my principals in my district, so it might have been different throughout the county, but they didn't notice hardly any difference in attendance in that first week when they went pre-Labor Day. So, it might be just different in different areas of the county. But I am completely convinced by all the conversations I've had this week to where I can support a post-Labor Day start.
Mr. Blaine, did you have something?
I'm going to take a little different tack, I'm afraid. Seems to be when we put a school budget, I mean, a calendar together, we have to think about the same thing as when we think about starting a child off in school. And we've got to ask primarily, what is best for children? In our situation, by law, the state says that ain't important. We're going to set the brawl. We're going to be based on a couple of parochial interests. They say, "Well, if you have too many snow days," on and on and on. What we need to have statewide, in my view, is the autonomy as a school division to decide what we want to do. We may decide tonight to do something, and if we get too many snow days next year, it's going to throw things awry, whatever. What has that got to do with student outcomes? Nothing. It depends on the weather. And I think that's a lousy way to do it. And I'd like to frankly enroll and encourage Mark Cole, one of the county employees, to introduce a bill and get some support for delegating that authority to the school divisions. And after all, we all believe that local control is the best thing. This is a good illustration of no local control, and we need it, frankly. And I think Mark... And I think Mark, uh, freelance style will help, hope. In this particular case, though, we have to have some kind of stability. I happen to be in favor of a pre-Labor Day start. I would start, though, probably the second week before Labor Day to give us, so every year, people know in advance when these holidays are, or when, when school is starting. And there are people right now who are chafing at the bit because they needed to have this calendar months ago to find their, set their vacation, for example, this coming summer. We're, and, and we're still holding it up in the air. If we had the decision-making ability, we could, we could have long ago decided this. However, two years ago, there was a lot of survey done, and I can say, almost everybody that contacted me argued one of two things, either before or after, and the ones who wanted it after, it was for their personal convenience because of vacations, family planning, or something like that. The, the teachers largely who preferred to come before Labor Days argued, as we've had some emails, we had a number of, and I had them as well, they were saying why it's better to go before Labor Day. But I think we need to stick with where we were. There was a broad enough consensus a, a year, two years ago, and I frankly don't think that that's changed. So I'm, I'm going to vote because, on that basis, for the recommendation of the post-Labor Day.
Mr. Laura.
Madam Chair, this is not easy, and it's never been easy, and I have read a number of emails from people for, for whom I have a great deal of admiration and respect, and they all make a great point for the pre. I have also read some wonderful email from people that I admire and respect on the post. A few years ago, in fact, for no, for many, many years, we were post-Labor Day county. Then we became a pre because there was a eloquent, um, position made that we should go pre, and I remember voting for going pre. And we remained pre-Labor Day for a number of years. Then two years ago, we went back to post. Now, I'm going to point that, wait a second. At some point, we need to recognize that our employees are not toys to play with. At some point, these, and our, our children and parents and, and our employees deserve our respect, and they already have plans for the summer. The summer, it's right around the corner. We cannot change at this stage of the game. The, the one recommendation out of this whole discussion that I would make to the superintendent is maybe in the future, we ought to have this discussion a lot sooner than not just a few months earlier. But I am going to vote with all the respect, as I said I would during our discussion earlier, for the post because I read the emails that I get in support of the post and also because I don't want to keep switching around. And I, I have not answered any of my email yet, but I, I don't think, if we take the vote, I, I would need to go into great discussion. I hope that the people that have taken the time to write to me will understand, and hopefully they don't hate me too bad, but I got, at the end of the day, I got to look in the mirror. And I'm going to support the, the post. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you again for giving me an opportunity to address this issue. I read with great concern today the series of emails that I received, emails that I received from teachers that were giving very eloquent arguments as to why it should be pre-Labor Day, and there were some that were also giving arguments for post. And I've always believed that you're always going to receive the most responses from the wind that you stepped on your foot. They're going to say ouch, and you're going to hear more from them because there's a silent majority out there that actually want post-Labor Day start. The only difference is if you kick them in the knee, they might curse you. But with that being said, the concern that I had had more to do with methodology. I believe that we established a post and pre-Labor Day course of action as the only two viable courses of action to settle the many different issues that we had as it pertained to AP testing and some other valid concerns that were brought up. And I would have liked to have seen if we would have had more facts on the, on, on the development of our courses of action, to even include other post-Labor Day courses of action that we could have considered, whether it be moving, you know, days around for vacations or whatever to accommodate the testing. That would have been a viable consideration so that it would take some of the rancor out of making this decision. So after giving a great deal of thought, and I haven't answered any of my emails either because I didn't want to respond off the cuff, but I gave it a lot of deep thought, and I want to just tell all of those people that wrote letters today to me, especially some teachers that I have great affinity for, one of them happens to be one of my son's AP government teachers at Cortland High School, and I hold her in very high regard. But I'm going to vote post-Labor Day, and I'm going to say to our calendar committee that did a very good job this time around, to give yourselves some more viable courses of action for us to consider. It doesn't have to be post or pre, it can be a, a combination of a variety of things. Sometimes the truth lies somewhere in the middle.
Once again, I want to thank the calendar committee. Oh, you have, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Blaylock, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did start receiving a few emails today. I didn't have that many emails, but I had started hearing some things in the past few days, and so what I decided to do is go on my social media and just throw out a very informal blanket question of, if you like, pre or post. The last I looked from this morning, we, I had 1,000 responses. They are, post would win, there was a lot for pre when I tallied. But the thing that I want to say, as someone had mentioned to me, well, I know you're strong for post, well, let me beg to differ that. I've been a public school mother since 1996, that's when my first born, who was 23, began kindergarten. I've had two post-Labor Day starts in that entire time, and they were here. Because when I moved here, we were pre-Labor Day. So I source this a lot because I, I wanted to make sure that when I make a vote, I'm, I'm elected to do what my community is asking. And so I really looked into it and I actually asked for the last survey. And I wanted to go back, and I, not that I needed to recall these days, there was a, I think there was over 300 emails at that time. But that community process was very extensive. I know that the school board members were engaging, principals were having forums, they were asking questions, and two years ago, the numbers looked like this. We had 32% that wanted one week before Labor Day. We had 3% that wanted two weeks before Labor Day. We had 13% that were other. And then 52%, the majority by far was post. Some of the benefits were aligning the calendar with surrounding counties, enrolling students from other districts due to post-Labor Day start, vacations, daycare inconvenience did make that bullet point. Consistency is important, and pre-Labor Day start is dependent on missed time from school. That is talking about the waiver. And then there was something cited, how would this maybe not benefit us? SOL score should not be impacted. And if I'm remembering right, the window, it was for SOLs can be moved.
That's correct.
The AP can, oh, I'm really well aware about AP. SOLs can be shifted, AP cannot be shifted, it's always the first of May. And that was cited, that the AP test window is, is fixed. It is noted here that there was concern about the instruction, having that five extra days, because the other calendar we're looking at was one week before Labor Day, and this was one week after. So we're talking about five days of instruction. That's all we're talking about right here. So I asked the question from, no one has been able to produce this, if they have this, please tell me, was there any studies that showed that that did affect AP students to lose the five days? And from what I'm hearing, no one can bring me a study that shows that that is the fact. It seems to be an argument, and it probably has some validity to it, I'm not saying that, but I couldn't get any data on that. In fact, if I remember correctly, we've had a slight increase in test scores after starting post-Labor Day. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. High schools did mention the fact, and, and actually, I was glad I had asked for the survey because this had slipped my mind, that our marching bands and our athletes are now actually working a full month and then some before, which is something that we all should consider. That was something that came up. And that, of course, the infamous, we don't want to end late, you know? And, and it's true, that this calendar does end on June 17th. So when looking at the thousand responses that I was able to look at, and if there's been more since we've been on the air, I apologize, I haven't read yours yet, I thought it would be good to point out some of the things that they said. And the end date was it, but there was a misconception out there in a few of the comments I want to straighten out. A lot of people said, we want our, I want to start before because I want my child to end in May. Well, we could do that, but it wouldn't be either of these calendars because even the one a week before still ended June 10th. Correct?
That's correct.
Correct. So we were going to go to June with either of the calendars, so I think that was kind of a misconception. We would have to start much earlier in August to pull that off as we're looking at getting our 100, we, we go by days, you can do hours or days, but Spotsylvania County goes by days. 180 days. Some comments, I'm just going to throw them out there because the, you're the calendar committee, and share them with them. Year-round school came up several times. The early and post-Labor Day, the consistency of post, I think, is, is, is something that came out a lot, and, and I understand that. If nothing else, it's just a consistent thing we're doing here. Someone wrote they would like some more, they needed more teacher workdays. Everyone seemed to like the change time, and what, one of our neighboring counties have, have looked into, and I believe are implementing, the change in time of high school as opposed to elementary starts, which is, like, I've mentioned that before publicly, I've come from a school system that did that. High school were the last to go, middle stayed the same, and elementary went first, and there is studies that, that show some, so there's some advantageous things that go with that. Not saying do, I'm just throwing out what comments were out there. And, yeah, and the other one was again, to change the high school time. Though, all of the pre did cite the instruction. And I absolutely agree with Mr. Blaine that if you ask yourself what calendar we should vote on, we should vote on the one that's right for children, period, a good instructional calendar. I believe the calendar committee brought us two very instructionally sound calendars. So either one would have worked for the instruction, and I think, we'll use my twins as example, would have received the same quality education next year in second grade as they would with this calendar or the other one, and I feel confident in my heart in that. But the majority was extremely strong with post, from what I heard of, so it will get my vote, but I just wanted to share some of the background from the past two years of the survey and what brought us to this today. If in the future we want to look at it, I'm open to anything, and, but right now, the community is, is very strong post with quite a bit, and I agree with Ms. Graham that I, I did hear a lot of teachers and staff asking for pre because they are looking at the instruction. They want that extra five days, and I understand that, too. But you never know what's going to happen. Last year, we ended up with having to cancel mid-terms for such severe weather, and then they, the year we had the earthquake, we did not have not one snow day, not one. So you never know. That's my two cents on that. Thank you for your time, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Madam Chair, if you could indulge me, one follow-up question. I do recall when the survey was done, as Mrs. Blaylock pointed out, one of the areas that was highlighted was the impact on AP because the SOLs, the dates were going to be moving. Do you recall what has come out of that discussion with knowing that the AP has a fixed date? And how does, how do the, how are the students prepared, you know, one calendar versus another for the AP test mid-May, beginning to mid-May?
Right. It, it's a very good question, and it goes back to Ms. Blaylock's comments, and she's accurate. When we look at our data in regards to the pre-calendar, pre-Labor Day start versus the post-Labor Day start, our pre-Labor Day AP data did not indicate that we were having a trend of growth for our AP scores. And when we looked at our post-Labor Day data in regards to AP scores, we were seeing a slight increase. And what we really looked at was that in, in looking at the data for the pre-Labor Day, it really set a tone, which is actually part of the budget process for this year, is the professional learning that our teachers really need so that the time that they do have the students, that we are educating our students to the best of our ability. And so we have taken some efforts to provide the professional learning for our AP teachers as well as in the budget, before you this evening, there is a portion of money, it's part of the IB as well as AP, so that we can provide the learning necessary for our teachers and give them the coaching opportunities so that they can in fact improve our AP scores because whether it's pre or post, we need to do better. And so, but we did not see, to be very honest, data indicates that we did not see an increase from pre versus post. We had a slight increase on post.
Thank you for sharing.
Okay. Thank you again for all of your, your hard work, and it was wonderful. I'm, the, the data, all of, everything that, that you've presented, the, the survey was a couple of years ago, and I'm going to just say what, I've received quite a few emails and phone calls prior to today, when we had a brunt of emails come in today. The ones that I'm, and I've not been able to answer the ones today, but the ones that I've had and the phone calls that I had prior to today were all pre-Labor Day, every one of them. They were instructional reasons, every one of them was instructional reasons. And I was on the calendar committee when we went post-Labor Day, and I was, that was what everyone had, that's what the, the results had come up with, and I was going to go with those results. And I did go with those results. But today, I am going to go the other way, and I'm going to be voting against the post-Labor Day calendar. So, thank you. So I'm going to call the question, may I, we have all, roll call starting, Mr. Laura.
Laura, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Braswell, aye. I would like you to clarify.
We are voting for the, the, the calendar that was presented.
Which says?
Which is for post-Labor, the day after Labor Day.
For post?
The day after Labor Day, yes, sir.
I wanted to be sure, I want to be sure the audience knows that, too. So I vote aye.
Nay. Graham, nay.
Shelley, nay. Okay, so that was five, two with the nays, Graham and Shelley. Thank you. On to the informational items, 9.01 head start, 9.02 discipline report, 9.03, anything for us? Okay, thank you, moving on to item 10.01, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business from anyone? Okay, I do have something I wanted to share, pulling it up here. First of all, I want to, we, a couple of weeks ago for the meeting, we, no, I said no one had told me any changes for their board member, for their board committees, so I said things were going to stay the same. I just wanted to have a clarification for the V S B A delegate and alternate, it's just automatically goes to the chair and vice chair, so for this year, it would be myself and Mr. Braswell. So I wanted to do clarification for that. And then also, the V S B A, our northeastern region did say that Spotsylvania County will be hosting the spring regional meeting here at Spotsylvania, here, I think we're going to have it here in the central office. So I just wanted to let everybody know, count, mark your count.
Count mark your calendar for April 20th. If you'll be able to be available to attend the Spring Regional Meeting. And then that's all I have for old business. Now, any new business? Okay. Moving on to, of item 11.01. On February 9th, 2015, resolved that the School Board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes. Consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees, or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the Board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Moved into closed session by Mr. Laura and a second by Mr. Dr. Meyer. All those in favor of going into closed session?
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Okay. Seven, zero. We are in closed session. We are in closed session.[327.66]